We will, I will call this meeting to order. Please rise. And trustee Highlandbach, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Has asked to be excused.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCostela.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Clerk Reyes is here. Supervisor Wilt.
Present. Thank you. We have a quorum, so we can continue. And the first order of business is the approval of the minutes of July 9th, 2024 of our board meeting. What is your pleasure?
I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July.
I have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion by trustee Carroll, seconded by trustee DeCostela, to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2024. Are there any additions, corrections, or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. All right. We will move right on to new business. And the first order of business is junior Bulldog Football and Cheer. Is there someone here to speak for them? If you would please approach the microphone, identify yourself, and then you can give us a brief summary.
Yes, thank you. My name is Kate Dooley. I have been before you previously in other positions, but today I stand before you. I am the VP of Operations for Junior Bulldog Football and Cheer. I do have some additional information that we need to know. First, I was supposed to be before you in May. I want to apologize again. I was not here. I was dealing with ongoing migraines that just left it a little difficult to keep anything straight. So I apologize. I am glad to be here.
But you're feeling better tonight.
Thank you, I am. So I'm here before you on behalf of Junior Bulldog Football and Cheer. It is an organization that has been around since 2016. We do service Riverside Township and the surrounding areas. Mostly, we are unofficially officially, we service individuals who may be attending Riverside Brookfield High School, but it is not, of course, limited to that. We do not have any requirement that they attend Riverside Brookfield High School or whatnot, but we do partnership with Riverside Brookfield High School quite a bit in our programming. And that is often how we attract those who are part of our program. We are a nonprofit organization that is 100% run by volunteers, both our board, our coaches. We are 100% volunteer-run organization. I myself, this is my fourth, is that right? Fourth season with the organization. It is my third season serving on the board. I have a child both in the football program as well as the cheer program. Our program has grown dramatically in recent years. When it started in 2016, there was a football program, and then there was a sideline cheer program. We have expanded, I should say, a tackle football program and a sideline cheer program. And I say sideline, meaning the cheerleaders cheered exclusively for the football teams. They didn't do any type of competitions at that time. In recent years, we have more than doubled in the athletes that we service. And we have also grown our programs to include a flag football program in the spring. And just this year, we now, we ran our first all-girls division of that flag program. And then we've also expanded our cheer program so that we now have two separate cheer programs that we run. We run a sideline program, which is referred to as Sparkle Cheer. They exclusively cheer for our football teams. It's a less commitment. They practice once a week, and then they cheer at the football games. And then we also have our competition, our competitive cheer program. It's a much larger commitment. They do also cheer for the football teams and do sideline cheer, but they also compete in competitions through the Illinois Cheer Association with the goal of going on to the state championship. So over the years, we've more than doubled. When we started with the program, the year before we started with the program, meaning my family, they were running at roughly 80 football players and roughly 60 cheerleaders in the fall program. This year, we now have 178 football, tackle football players. And I can't quite do the math there. 171 plus 78 would be what? 100 and roughly 160 cheerleaders between the two different programs. So as you can see, we've grown a lot. What I'm here for today, though, is specifically to ask for funding for our financial aid program or scholarship program. As our program has expanded, also has the need for many of our athletes, or we now service a number of athletes who have financial need. We also have had school districts and various other programs reach out to us about whether or not we can sponsor athletes. Specifically, last year, the social worker at Central Elementary School reached out to us, said, hey, I have an athlete who I think, or a student who I think would be really wonderful for your program, or the program would be really wonderful for him, but he doesn't have the financial means to do so. So last year, we were able to match him with a sponsor who sponsored his participation in the program. There are a number, yesterday, last year, there were a number of instances where we were contacted, and then we kind of scrambled to find the funds to cover them. Over the last three years, while I have been involved in this program, but it actually started the year before I joined the board, we have been working to really stabilize the financial standpoint of the, of the organization. It's fairly new. And as we are all run by volunteers, we are often figuring out how to do this as we go along. But I am very proud to say that the organization is on very stable footing at the moment financially. But we are still trying to grow our reserve because as the program grows, our needs grow. We are very reliant on the high school and places like the MACS, and that stuff can change on the dime. So we really need to keep our reserve healthy so we can continue to provide for these athletes. Last year, and if we're not able to secure other funding, we will be able to cover our scholarships by dipping into our reserve, but we're trying to move away from dipping into our reserve for, I think, fairly obvious reasons. So that's why we're here today. In my request, I specifically asked for $4,500. At the time that I put in that request, that was the amount of asks that we had from our, those who had registered. And at the time that I put in that application, registration was still open. Registration has long since closed. Our season is on the way. And we are now at a total awarded amount of $5,075. That amount services 11 families and 17 athletes. When we ask for, or the way we get information for those who require aid, and the amount is, we do have an application that was part of the registration process. People applied. We did ask them to submit evidence of their financial need, whether that be government supports that they receive, or pay stubs, or other, some have, you know, just documented letters of the hardships that they're going through. We asked how much they are able to pay of the registration costs. And then we, we chose to award the full amount that they asked for. So for some, that was a full scholarship; for some, that was a partial. But the average per athlete is roughly $300. To give you some context of what registration costs are, the most expensive of our programs is the competitive cheer program. That costs $525 in registration fees. But then there are significant costs on top of that because they, their uniforms are very expensive. If they make it to state competition, state competition, that's an additional fee. So that is a very expensive program. But if we're just talking about registration, that's 525. Our tackle football program, aside from the very youngest kindergarten and first graders, which is only $250, that program is $425 for registration. That is pretty much all-inclusive. There aren't really additional costs after that. The caveat being that there is a $100 fundraising fee for all of our programs, for our scholarship families. We waive that fundraising fee for the most part, depending on what they said their need was. And then the final program is our Sparkle Cheer program, and that cost is $250. And again, that is all-inclusive. There are no additional costs for that program. In the pamphlet I provided, I did provide some information regarding who it is that we, is involved in our program as far as where they live. Brookfield wins out. Unfortunately, I, as I mentioned, I am a volunteer. I was going to break it down as to specific township, and I didn't quite get that information. So I apologize for that. But Riverside comes in second, with North Riverside slowly behind there. Those are the three majority areas where our, our athletes come from. One thing I do want to note is our program is a non-tri-out program. There is no tryout. There is no barrier to entry as far as skill level. We will, everyone is welcome. And we just don't want to make financial means a barrier for our athletes. So I think I covered all my bases here. I guess one other thing as far as of the amount that, of financial aid that we have agreed to pay, I can tell you that seven of the 11 families that we are providing scholarship for are Riverside Township families. And that amount comes to $3,600.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a couple. Did you bring any of your financial documents with that we could see what your reserve is?
I did not bring them with. I can tell you that we are running at about $83,000 in reserve at this time. Our program costs are close to $150,000 just for the fall program. It's getting very, much closer to $200,000. We've done some projections and whatnot. But one of the things that we have been lacking is we have not had a strong financial mind on our board for quite some time. I am an attorney by trade. I would not call myself a strong financial mind. I have worked very, very hard to become one. So I would be, while I can give you that information, I'm not sure it would hold the muster when it comes to that. But that is about where we are. We are at about 86. Our goal is to run at about $100,000 reserve, and we are almost there. I do anticipate we will be there after, after this year.
And it says here that 15% of the funding is through fundraising. What types of fundraisers do you do?
So we do do that $100 family fundraising fee. That goes to, this year, the program that we are utilizing is called Booster Shot. Previously, it was Charity Mania. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. That is used by a lot of different organizations. It's, families pay the $100. They get five tickets that they then can sell or keep for themselves. It's tied to NFL football season. Every football game, there is a raffle where individuals win money. I don't have a great understanding of how it works. I don't sell the tickets myself, and I don't pay close attention. But it's basically a raffle ticket system that is run through a third party. We switch the vendor. So that's, that's our main fundraiser. That's, that's where the bulk of that comes from. Our other, second-largest fundraiser is concessions at our home football games. So we have between four and five home games, not including any playoff games, but four to five home games that we run concessions. And that's the second biggest one. And then there's a few smaller here. We've done a bingo night. We've done small things that are almost more social than they are fundraising because they raise a little bit, but not, not extensive amounts.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. Maybe you mentioned it. If you did, I apologize. Have you requested funds from any other organizations, and have they come forward?
Yes. So the only other organization that we have received funds from are Riverside Junior, Riverside Women Juniors. They did provide a $500 fund, which would get us right to just under the 5,000, or just under the 5,000 total that we've given out, should you grant us the full amount. But it's $500 from Riverside Juniors.
Okay. So I have a question for our board, then. Is this the same type of funding? Would this be the same type of funding as the baseball team that came before us last year, I believe, or early this year?
I, that's what my questioning was.
Okay.
I mean, do you have sponsorships such as Little League teams have?
Well, correct.
So I was here for that meeting, actually, coincidentally. So I would like to speak to it when you're done. I apologize, I don't want to interrupt.
No, please.
Please.
So one of the main differences between their program and our program, without throwing any bit of negativity towards the Rockets program in any way, is they are a tryout program. They are exclusive to their, to the members that they select to be part of that program. I do believe they were also asking for funding to go to a championship, to the championship game, or some sort of travel to that location. Whereas we are instead asking specifically for funds to support those in financial need of our organization. We are not asking to fund anything else specifically. These funds would be earmarked for scholarships for those who have proven financial need to be part of the program.
So there is a difference there, trustee DeCostela. But, you know, it's, it's a youth program. They're helping mainly Riverside Township residents that need some assistance with, you know, funding for this. They've never been to us before, according to our records.
Correct.
I would be, I wouldn't be willing to go the $4,500. Absolutely not.
I would like to point out also, trustee Highlandbach, I went back through those also, and when we were doing sponsorships for Little League teams, we're in the $300 to $500 range.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
Okay.
You know, I have no problem being a sponsor of the Bulldog Football and Cheer, but I would be a sponsor only at $500.
Any other discussion? Would that be in the form of a motion?
I make a motion that we grant the Brookfield Football and Cheer Association a...
Bulldog, you mean? Junior Bulldog?
Pardon me?
I think you said Brookfield. I think you meant Junior Bulldog.
It's the Bulldog Football and Cheer Association.
Right, right.
There's some confusion. We are Bulldog Football Cheer Association, doing business as Junior Bulldog Football and Cheer. There was a name change in the mix that never was officially changed. So apologize for the confusion on that one.
That's right.
A sponsorship in the amount of $500.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach and a second by trustee Carroll to grant, to award $500 toward the Junior Bulldog Football and Cheer Association partnership. Any further discussion?
No.
No?
No discussion. Thank you.
Then would you please call the motion?
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Something better than... All right. Our next, next partnership request is from People Care.
Hi again. I'm Judy Mantel, the executive director of People Care. It's actually nice to see everyone here in the summer as compared to winter. I, People Care is our local nonprofit that supports our senior citizens with free services. Our main service that we provide is transportation, free transportation to and from doctor's appointments, therapy appointments, quality-of-life appointments, and financial appointments. As I was preparing my numbers for tonight, the numbers that I turned in with my request were requesting $14,000 this year, up from $12,500 last year. As I was preparing my numbers, my service numbers are obviously more because this has been a month since I requested it. And as I was preparing these, I got a little eye-opening. As of today, for our rides, we are at 84% of what we were total of 2023. So I am anticipating with four more months to go, we're going to far exceed what we did in 2023 for 2024. The miles that our volunteers have driven were up 86%. We've, at 73% of last year's totals for our errands, we're at 80% of the amount of hours that our volunteers have put in. We're at 80% of the amount of meals that we've delivered, with the meals do matter. We're up this year 1.6 clients per week than what we were in 2023 for the grand total of new clients. And we still have a little bit more than a quarter of the year to go. So our services are greatly, greatly needed within our township and within our, the communities that Riverside Township services. The main increases that I'm really looking at seeing is going to be an increase in postage. Postage rates just went up. Even though we do have the nonprofit status and we do have an Indishah, I can only utilize that Indishah when I send out 250 or more pieces at one time. So any other communications I have far as sending out new client packets, sending out thank-you notes, sending out letters to other organizations and companies and that for seeking grants and stuff, is just regular postage rates. Minimum wage did go up this year. So our, on our board, and it's on our agenda to approve giving our four employees the increase of minimum wage this year. And then, obviously, printing costs are up. I don't have an exact number on that one, but I do know that they are up because we just filed our annual appeal. And last year, I spent 370-some dollars to have it printed. This year, it was a total of $424. So, and yes, I had 70 more letters printed than I did the previous year, but $70 increase is a $70 increase. So our newest program, Bounders and Geezers, which we do in conjunction with Cantada Adult Life Services, that is our men's-only club. And we are seeing, it started out with three men attending it, and now weekly, we have an average of nine people attending it. And we provide transportation for those gentlemen to get to Cantada to participate in this program. And the program is run by Bruce Jablonsky, who used to be our director. He is running it now. And there's only three rules to the format of the program. They can't discuss politics, and they don't discuss religion. And sometimes, depending on the climate, they don't discuss football or other sports. But it's, it's a program to help men have the support of each other that women and women's friendships, not automatically, but have that men don't do. I have a rough day, I call my sister, I call my best friend. Men have a rough day, they come home, they stew about it. They, I don't really know what they do. But it's not quite the same camaraderie as it is with female friendships and female support groups. Men also typically don't seek out help as readily and easily as women will. It's, we're still in that generational period where men were brought up and told that, you know, man up, fuck up, you can do it, take care of it, deal with it. Whereas we're raising our children not quite that way. So, so the Bounders group is a really, really great program, and I'm happy that it's successful, and I'm happy that it is, you know, continuing to go. And I'm thrilled that we are able to have the volunteers to get those men there to participate in it. It's really, I mean, you guys know everything we do. I hate to sound like a broken record in that respect. Oh, yesterday, Nala, our therapy dog, she received, she went through her recertification process, and she plastered with flying colors. So she's able to go and do her visits. And this year, we're already at 65 or 66 visits for the year for her, which, you know, we started it a year and a half ago, where she started visiting someone once a week. And now she's visiting at least one person almost every single week. So we're really excited that she's, she's doing so well. So...
Thank you.
So is there any questions?
Trustees, anything?
Just curious. The 1.7 people per week that have increased?
Yes.
Out of those, how many are township residents?
Out of all of our clients, which we have 328 clients, of those 328, 237 are active, which means they seek at least one of our services weekly and/or more. Out of all of that, we have 18 people that are out of the township within a half a mile of our township boundaries. So it's...
Mostly, it's township.
It's, it's, yeah. But that comes down to 5% of our clients is out of the township boundaries, and they're only out of it by half a mile. It's not like, you know...
Okay.
Thank you.
One of those things. And the other thing, too, is North Riverside, their senior bus transportation, they've been having problems keeping that staff with the driver. So we're getting an influx of new people partly because of that. And North Riverside, the village refers them to us. And I also went and spoke at their block captain meeting because Carol Spail, who used to organize all of that, asked me to come and speak and let all the block captains know about what we do. So I'm, you know, kind of guessing that's part of the reason why we saw the increase in that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Then what is your pleasure?
I made a motion that we approve the grant for People Care in the amount of $14,000. I know it's a little higher than we usually go, but we have no bus service for our seniors. People Care charges a low rate...
We don't charge.
Well, I...
It's free.
It's free.
That's very low.
Low, we can go.
It's free, and I may be using him soon, so...
I actually do have one question for supervisor Wilt. Does this, does this come out of, is this general, general fund, or would this be available out of? We had this discussion earlier.
Yes. I don't think that this would fit under general assistance, per se, because it's not for indigent, or it's not economically based, but more age-based. So I don't know. I mean, perhaps we could do that, but it would come out of senior programs budget.
Okay.
I think we discussed, too, that was the broadening of this new state law that...
Right.
But you do need to, we do need to put a policy, I think, in place to employ that option.
Yeah, that's something we need to address.
Which is not, would be difficult. It would be next meeting if we wanted to set that up.
Okay.
So depending on timing, maybe that's still an option.
Okay.
If we put that in place.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can tell you that 32% of our clients are at the poverty level, and they're on Medicaid and Medicare.
Okay. Thank you. That, that might be helpful to this, but we do have to establish policy on that. All right. Then, I know I have a motion. Did I have a...
I will second that. I will second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee DeCostela to approve the $14,000 award to People Care, Inc. for their request. Any more discussion?
I want to thank you for the work you do. I think it's incredibly important for the neighborhood. So I'm proud to go there.
Thank you. Yes, we're very proud of it. They're part of my heart.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mrs. Mantel. You do a great job.
Thank you. And onward to the Hollywood Citizens Association.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Gonzo Scheckziner. I'm president of the Hollywood Citizens Association. We are volunteer caretakers of the Hollywood House. It's a 100-year-old building that served as the first elementary school in Hollywood neighborhood, so the children didn't have to walk across the railroad tracks. It served as a church for many years, and currently, it serves as a place to meet for the community, as well as young life meets in the basement. They serve students throughout the community, including at RB. We have alcohol inhalants upstairs two or three days a week. And then we have plenty of families in the community and the surrounding areas that use it for events like graduation parties and birthday parties and other events like that. We're requesting some funds to help us redo the floor of the upstairs, which hasn't been updated since the '70s. It's not dangerous yet, but we want to try and replace it before it gets to a place where we can't have events in the building anymore. We have a, currently have a 30-year lease with District 96, 96 where we volunteered a very large chunk of land behind the Hollywood House for the playground at Hollywood Elementary. We, just three years ago, we expanded the size of the elementary playground three times and it's, it's a great playground. We started that process when my son was there and finished it when my daughter was there. So it only took us eight years. But we have this beautiful playground there now that's on part of the Hollywood Community House land. So we're seeking funds to help us redo the floor. And open any questions?
Questions?
Yes. Do you charge rent to use the Hollywood House?
We do.
And what's that rent, if I could ask?
Uh, well, it depends on if you're a member of the HCA or not. It's a $20 a year. We have very few people actually sign up for it, but it's, I want to say about 65 or 80, $75 an hour. Yeah, I could pull those numbers up.
And do you do any fundraising besides this?
We do a resale each year.
Right, right.
And we make a couple of hundred dollars off of that. It's mostly to do the resale as a community outreach. We used to have a pancake breakfast, but we never really made any money on it. It was mostly, it was a very expensive effort to put on and we typically grossed, I mean, netted about $200 or $300 from the event. So we didn't actually do it this year. We didn't have it during the pandemic either.
And your, your proposal wants us to pay for the whole floor?
If we can, yes, yes.
So we have no, no other partners involved in this?
No, not right now, no.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I believe we've had other requests to be partners in building projects as well. And I think when we spoke to council and I think amongst ourselves, it was not something for us to be involved in with building projects.
Well, the Riverside Township did help us with the chimney at some point. We had some issues with the chimney on the top of the house right next to the playground and we reached out for funds for that. You supported that too.
That may have been in the past. We have talked amongst ourselves at the board level with council and I believe we came to a conclusion that being involved in building projects was not, was not for us to be getting involved in.
It has to fit within the parameters of what a township is allowed to and is supposed to do. And so if it were for programs, we would consider it. If it were for somehow health and, and safety and welfare kinds of projects, we could do that. If it's a youth or senior program that, you know, needs support that we could, would do ourselves but don't have the bandwidth to do, those are appropriate partnerships. But, but building issues, and I think I mentioned that perhaps as well.
Well, Young Life has their offices in the basement and they do have events on the first floor. And the PTA, the Hollywood Elementary PTA, as well as Hollywood Elementary has used it as well. We have Girl Scout events and Boy Scout events in there when they need it. So it's used by the community and it's not just a rental facility.
If you were to get some support from the township, what, where would you go for the rest of it?
Well, we have done outreach to the community for support at times. We've never really raised a significant amount of money for it. We, like I said, we make a few hundred dollars on our resale each year and we made about $200 or $300 when we did a pancake breakfast. So we don't really have a whole lot of revenue generating opportunities.
And you haven't reached out to any other organizations to help fund your project?
No, Riverside Township was the first because we have a relationship. We've received grants before, so we thought we'd reach out here first.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. What is your pleasure? Do I hear any motions? I'm afraid it fails for the lack of a motion. We don't, there's no motion to support. Therefore, it fails. And we appreciate your, your coming out, but there won't be any partnership here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And North Riverside Parks and Recreation.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brian Rulo. I'm from the North Riverside Parks Recreation. I also have Jean Marie from our office joining me. I am a recreational assistant. I'm taking over our Autumn Fest event as we are in a change in director roles at the village. So thank you for being patient with the forms as I was filling them out. I've worked for the REC for 12 years and we're, you know, we do a lot of affordable programming for the Riverside Township area and all of our surrounding communities from the area. And we are looking for a partnership to help assist in offsetting our kids' zone for our Autumn Fest event and the chili cook-off. We strive to have a safe area for the kids to have fun while the event is going on, so they're not running around doing who knows what while their parents are, you know, enjoying the event also. This event sees over about 3,000 people, many from the Riverside Township area and surrounding areas. And we are asking for a little over $3,000 to offset some of these activities for the events. These activities are no charge for those attending the events. And, you know, the village as a whole sees very little tax revenue in general from the residents. So this is a great way to help offset some of these events for them. So it's a little more entertaining and a good place to be. And, you know, it's one of our biggest events that we do and we think it'd be a great partnership with the Riverside Township. I think that's all I have right now.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Just, this is very brief. It says to provide a description of the organization. Okay, the organization is affordable classes and program, but this is directly for the Autumn Fest.
Yeah, so the REC itself oversees obviously the programming for the area and this is just for the special event that's on September 20th.
Are we on the hook for a bouncy house? If something, I mean, the.
I actually have that question as well.
Asking for a liability waiver, but are we getting on the hook for, for that? Is that problematic, Mike? I don't.
I don't think by providing funding or anything, you have to say in line to a renting rate.
So the parks and Rec for the villages.
Yeah. They would have insurance coverage and. Yeah, they have the COI, their company, plus the mechanical pumpkin thing. They have to actually sign a waiver to use it.
To participate. Yeah, I, I, you know, I understand it's a legitimate concern and question.
Yeah.
But I think under those circumstances that, you know, the township is, is covered. God forbid something were to happen and you were named, I, you know.
I got rid of.
Maybe, yeah, you may.
No joke, man.
I, I don't foresee any liability under those circumstances when you're contributing a financial amount, but not making the arrangement per se.
So the total amount you're seeking is the $3,004 and that would be paid directly to the vendors?
Oh, so you're paying.
So, so, yeah, I, I.
The township is paying.
We would be paying.
We have to pay the vendor, correct?
Right, because we don't, we don't give money from one taxing body to the other.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I don't foresee that as a deal. But that might be something that the township might want to just address with your insurance to make sure they're aware of that and okay with that and that you're covered. But I, I would think that would be something that could be navigated and not prohibited.
Which we've done before. I really.
However.
But the contract goes to the.
Contract goes to the township.
The village signs the contract.
The village has the contracts.
We just pay the vendor, the village signs the contract. Because we can't.
I understand, you know, there's an additional connection there that more so than what I was discussing. But I, yeah, it's a concern, but I, I think between the village signing the contract and having insurance and the township having insurance, this is within your court mission. So I, I would think there's coverage. You're not hanging out there, so to speak.
Right. And also, I mean, the second page of the agreement, of our agreement, of the second page of the deals with a lot of those liabilities. Purchased through community partnership. And that, and North Riverside Parks and Recreation shall fully indemnify, hold harmless, and defend the Riverside Township and its officers against claims and so forth. And then later on it says, North Riverside Parks and Recreation becomes the owner of the property and assumes all liability and maintenance. So.
So if the township were named a defendant, what you'd do is tender the defense to the village's insurance and they would take it from there. So.
Right.
So you're.
I think we're, we're covered in that.
You're covered. That, to me seems to be the appropriate arrangement and I think addresses the concern, which is a good one. But, and it's a little trickier when you're making the direct payment. I understand that.
Yeah.
A little different from just handing that check over to be paid by somebody else.
Okay. Are we, are we okay with that then? Then what, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we enter into a partnership with the Village of North Riverside for the Autumn Fest in the amount of $3,004.
I have a motion by Trustee DeCassola. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Well, we have to.
Give it to John.
All right. Trustee Carroll, seconds. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Then will you please call the roll?
Trustee DeCassola.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Next order of business under new business is a special event request from the Riverside Arts Center Fall Gala. And you have the request in your folder, in your binders. This requires the board's approval because they will have alcohol on premises. They know to provide insurance. The rental fees are listed there. And what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Riverside Arts Center request for space for their event, October 19th, with the insurance and alcohol approval.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee DeCassola, seconded by Trustee Hylandbach to approve the Riverside Arts Center's request to use the building with alcohol served for their fall gala on Saturday, October 19th. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Hylandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCassola.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. All right. The next item, actually I will report on that within my report. I don't know that we need a lot of discussion. I think the issues have been resolved. There was a, a bit of a kerfuffle over a couple of things. The, the Township Theater Guild was doing, actually, if, if you want to reserve this discussion until my report and then we can, we can get into those details. I would invite that. Okay? If that's all right, then let's move on. Communications.
No communications.
No communications. All right then. My supervisor's report is here. So. So, report of the past month, there's been another surge in assistance requests, although not everyone follows through. I've been very busy with those applications. You will see a slight increase in staff compensation over the next, the course of time now because Nina has increased her hours. She now has taken on a few additional tasks that are more in the nature of housekeeping oversight since I've not had success in finding a part-time custodian. So now the food pantry is under her supervision and she's organized it quite well already and, and is keeping up on that. She's also getting, after more organization in our storage areas and the nurse's closet, which was kind of a, a hot mess. Her hours have been increasing gradually, but she is going from part-time to full-time at this point and she will remain hourly. I've got it within the budget because I will be using some of that janitorial budget as well. So if you see some shifting in coming months of one budget to the other, that's why. I was unfortunately out of, let's see, there was a confrontation between myself and the Children's Theater Group leadership when they left some large items in the way of other auditorium users. Before that was even resolved, we coincidentally discovered some unauthorized, unannounced entry into the building. After their summer production was over, we had a meeting to clear the air and going forward, some practices will change with your approval. One, they will not be loaned any keys, so they will have to be let in by staff or elected officials when they need space outside of normal office hours. Two, they will apply for community partnerships rather than being automatically placed on the budget as, as our program. Three, it was necessary to have some doors rekeyed because we discovered some unauthorized copies of keys had been made allegedly by someone we can't go after at this point. We couldn't guarantee that, that there aren't, there weren't more copies of those keys, so the rekeying had to be done. The cost of the locksmith will be charged against the remaining funds in the current budget line for that group. And finally, and five, they will, they will be more conscientious and respectful of others using the building. And finally, they will share information about their programs and their shows with us so that we know what's going on and can share it on our own sites as well. Until now, we were calling it a township program, but we couldn't answer any questions from the public except to refer them to the director. So the resolution was the most peaceful and mutually respectful approach we could take. I think everybody is, is all right with what's going on. So I, I hope that you will support that, that resolution of the issues. I was unfortunately out of the office for the majority of last week because I tested positive and hence the, the mask today and I was needing to isolate, but I've been healthy since Friday and so I'm wearing this to protect you and myself. Finally, the auditors have been nudged. They seem to be on track to get the audit finished on time this year. So hopefully they're just putting some final, finishing touches, but I will be on them on a regular basis to make sure that that happens. Just offhand, the vouchers keep going out for the farmer's market and right now about 35% utilization so far, but a lot of people save them up and then use them later in the season. So that's all I have to report. I'd be glad to answer any other questions you might have. Okay. Then moving right along. Oh, by the way, we got, after the, it was in the middle of the debate, so we got a large acknowledgement on the program for the theater group. Yes, Assessor.
Good evening. I'm Fran Sitkowitz, the Township Assessor, here to report on what's going on in the assessing world. Our appeal session with the Board of Review will end Wednesday, August 20th, and this will mark the end of the 2024 Appeal Session and the Cook County Level. We conducted an outreach on August 8th. We had pretty good turnout, not as many people as we usually have, but we were expecting that because we know it's a popular time to go on vacation. But we had about 30 people in attendance. So we had a lot of representatives from the Board of Review and everyone, I think our taxpayers felt really good because they got a lot of one-on-one attention. So, so I think everyone was happy who attended that meeting. Along with appeals, we're still assisting our taxpayers with certificates of error for homeowner exemptions, just on all levels. And of course, it still is a busy time with house sales around here. So we do answer a lot of questions of potential new taxpayers. So things have been busy upstairs.
Do we think there was, recently the county assessor's office was in the news a lot. Do we think any of the properties that were unassessed or under assessed fell within our borders?
I had one that was questionable. The assessor's office told me it was accurate. I would like to see some support on that. But, but I, we, you know, I still thought it was a little over assessed for, for Riverside Lawn. It was some vacant land in Riverside Lawn. And I think that as time goes on, I think the Cook County Assessor's Office has lost sight of. has lost sight of what happened there back in 2013 with the buyout of those properties.
All right.
So we, I think we need to have a little meeting about that with them.
Okay.
And hopefully the, the person who owns the property did file, was, did file an appeal, so hopefully that appeal will be successful.
Okay. But none of the, because there were, there were reports of numerous properties, like expensive properties that just fell off the rolls altogether and others were having to support it?
Yes.
We're not aware of anything like that here?
We aren't. We have the very fortunate ability, because we're a small township, there is not much that happens around here without, without one of us in the assessor's office knowing what's going on. So new building does not go without notice around here.
I was trusting that that was the case, but I thought it should be aired here.
In larger townships, Barrington, you know, Bloom, Lions Township is huge and, and Assessor Heinz, that was his, his little project. Because he realized after he took office that there were a lot of parcels there that were being under assessed. And, and I think the, well, there was a huge article in the Tribune this weekend about it.
Right.
So it's being addressed now.
Good, good. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were, we're in good territory.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
One last question. Assessor Sitkowitz, what should a homeowner do if they've neglected to file their appeal before now? You have what, approximately one week to contact your office?
Yes, they can contact my office, send us an email, give us a phone call. We can run comps and have them to our taxpayers in five minutes' time. So there's plenty of time left between now and the hour we close our office on August 20th. So we'll, yeah, we're trying to, and we usually do meet most requests within a reasonable amount of time. As long as no one's sneaking any love notes under our door on August 20th, then we could pretty much address anything.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, trustees' reports. Trustee Hylandbach?
I have no report.
Trustee Carroll?
No report.
And trustee DeCostola?
Thank you, supervisor, no report.
Thank you very much. Okay, and mental health board doesn't meet in the summertime, so we will move on to the, for your information, please note that in your binders you have the current state of the ordinance for compensation for township officials. This has to be set at least six months before the election. So I've provided this so that you can study it and we can be prepared next month to address this. We can have a discussion on that in the, in a committee of the whole, if you're willing to meet the day after Labor Day, which is the day that would fall on. But if, I mean, if it's pretty straightforward, I will also, there have been a couple of studies. Some, some of it has been noted in the Township Officials Magazine. And I think there was a Cook County survey of salaries as well. So we can, I can get that data to you so that you can better consider it and I would send it in advance. So just be prepared that that's an item that's coming up for us. Okay? Any questions? Then let's move on to the approval of warrants. Trustee DeCostola, would you?
Thank you. Make a motion that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, August 2024, in the amount of $19,701.06 as presented to the board 13th day of August 2024.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Then I have a motion by trustee DeCostola, seconded by trustee Hylandbach to approve the general warrants for August 2024 in the total amount of $19,701.06. Are there any questions or discussion? Then would you please call the roll?
Trustee Hylandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostola.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion is carried.
Make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, August 2024, in the amount of $1,164.53. Payroll warrant, the amount of $18,059.33. Health warrant, the amount of $3,234.55. General assistance warrant, the amount of $10,929.89. And the food pantry warrant, the amount of $2,539.96. All of the above as presented to the board 13th day of August 2024.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you then. I have a motion by trustee DeCostola, seconded by trustee Hylandbach to approve the following warrants in the following amounts. The utility warrant in the amount of $1,164.53. The payroll warrant in the amount of $18,059.33. The health warrant in the amount of $3,234.55. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $10,929.89. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $2,539.96. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee DeCostola.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Please note in your reports, the financial reports, that there is an updated report for the end of June. There were some adjustments, adjustments made after the fact to correct some, some items. There's nothing of consequence, but it will explain some things that, there's a little bit of adjustment there. There were some voided checks that needed to be done and so forth. And otherwise, you have the, the revenue and expenditure reports for the past month. Is there any comments from the public? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by trustee DeCostola, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I thought everybody wanted to stay. Very good. All in favor of adjourning? Sig and five are saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried. Thank you.